Sure, so I am promoting Karen Jofflin and Arthur Babitz to the conversation. They of course are county commissioners. And they had asked if they could come to one of our meetings just to have a chat with us after what happened earlier on in the year and kind of our shifting our strategy and such. So you know what I've talked to, I've talked to, had conversations with Jeff Haxel and Abigail Elder over the city about trying to think about having some conversations this spring before we plan for what's maybe happening here in November. And I think this is one of the very first conversations here where we can kind of just have some open dialogue about how we could coordinate and cooperate and, you know, maybe kind of a little bit about what their line of thinking was and that. So anyways, I will turn it over to Arthur and Karen if you'd like to take it from here.
Laura, excuse me, hello, everybody. Yeah, I really appreciate you having us here. Yeah, so at our Board of Commissioners meeting, now Karen, interrupt me anytime you want. But at our Board of Commissioners meeting, we acknowledged that the way that we went through the process last time was not optimal. We as a commission got sort of spun up into the issues later than ideal. And the result was that you had gone pretty far down a path. And then we had some problems with that path. And next thing we knew, the deadline was upon us and you all know what happened. So what we're trying to do here is to avoid that, get the discussion started as early as possible, help you understand what issues we care about as commissioners, maybe also as citizens, but mostly as commissioners. And hopefully that will help your planning so that you can come up with a good way to get what you need out of the public. And also maybe we do have a little more visibility maybe than you do into some of the other big things that are going on in the community that are needing a money. And the interplay of them is something that you may or may not need to integrate into your thinking. But mostly I'm here because I kind of want to be able to answer your questions and to just sort of brainstorm with you about what's coming up. And I haven't really talked to Karen about it, so I'm eager to hear what she has to say.
Thank you, thank you all for letting us squeeze into your meeting. I know most of you and those of you I don't know, it's nice to meet you. It's pretty much similar to Arthur. I think Arthur has much more information around some of the technicality pieces of the rates and the compressions and the issues around some of those things around capital levies and operational levies. I wanted to come because I wanted to share my experience, if it was helpful, in what our journey was like as we went through trying to get our operational levy approved in the community and the failures we experienced in the beginning and all the different advice that we received from all the different experts. And looking back on it now, I've learned a lot about what that really means for the community of Hood River as opposed to other communities and how our community reacts to certain questions compared to other communities. So I came just to hopefully to be helpful. I had, in my personal admittance, I felt bad that there was a lot of work put forth in your process and it was a bit derailed. And I know what work put forth really means like in these positions. And so I really felt for that. So I want to do what I can to be helpful as this process and discussion continues.
Thank you. There was a lot of work put into this, a lot of work. And we, we made some pretty hard decisions and choices. It was very well thought out, we thought. So I definitely, from my perspective, and Nan and Suzanne, please jump in. I can't wait to hear why you thought we should go change course. Please, go ahead.
I think, Arthur, you should probably maybe address some of the immediate technical concerns.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
And then I'd like to share some of them, a kind of a different perspective, more of a community view in how I experienced our process as a county commissioner when we went for our big ask and what I learned. I'd like to be able to share a little bit of that. So Arthur, I'll let you go first.
Yeah, so it's kind of interesting because, so I know a lot about how Oregon's tax system works. And, and what you guys were trying to do was a really clever way of working around Oregon's tax system. The problem was that, in our view, the way that you worked around it would effectively penalize other taxing entities in the future. So technically, the issue is that in 1990, in the 1990s, I'll just say, two measures were passed, Measure Five and Measure Fifty, which created the very confusing tax system we have. And these were actually burned into the state constitution as Article Eleven, Section Eleven. And what it does is, the primary thing that we all know about is it sets these permanent rate limits and that these are the mill rate, the millage rate, or the number of dollars per thousand that each entity gets for various purposes. What people don't really know about is that there's a second system underlying it. And when you look at your tax bill, the tax assessors had to go through a very complicated calculation where they have considered all the tax lines into two categories, which were general government and education. And then there are separate limitations on those as a percentage of real market value, not as a percentage of assessed value. So there was one tax system based on AV and a second one based on RMV. And this is just a wildly confusing and wildly complex thing. And, and your request happened to come along right after we had discovered that we had an incredibly bizarre effect that had happened from a decision that the city had made a couple of months before. So COVID hit, the city said, hey, we've got all these taxing districts that are going to be potentially losing funding from other sources. So let's declare an urban renewal holiday. And we will not collect urban renewal taxes for this year. And the result of that will be that those taxes, instead of going to urban renewal, will go to all the other districts, including your district, through what's called Division of Taxes, and should give you more money. Great, so they did that. And the result of it was actually that the school district got less than they would have gotten. And this was because by stopping that collection of taxes for urban renewal, which is a general government function, and switching those into the school district as an education function, we then went into some serious additional compression in the school line item, which resulted in a completely different effect than was, that was anticipated or intended. In this case, the change was made specifically to see that these organizations get more taxes. And specifically what got punished was not the general, the school dollars, which basically are the common school fund, but the local option levy that we had passed. So the school district got less local option levy dollars than it would have gotten if the city had not made the effort to send them more money. So that just gives you a feeling for how complicated. And I'll tell you, I went to talk to Brian Beebe about this. I said, Brian, this is where I saw my tax bill. I sat down with an expert on this and we worked through and this is what we saw. And his first reaction was, no, no, that can't be possible. And then we looked and said, no, no, that's exactly what happened.
So I appreciate that the city's urban renewal holiday impacted the school district's section. But you know, before making our decision about what the amount was that we were going to be asking for, we had Brian come in and explain to us all exactly what you just shared with us. So we had the opportunity to do our due diligence and understand that. So back to the government category and outside of the urban renewal holiday piece, are you saying that our increased rate would affect, was somehow affected or impacted by this urban renewal holiday? Because if it was just a temporary thing, I'm not sure that, it's our understanding that we're not, even with the increased rate that we would have gone for, that we would be that closer, that much closer to the $10 cap for government.
General government, yeah.
Yeah.
No, so the urban renewal example I gave you was just an example of how compression works, how compression can work in surprising matters. So the question which you're asking now is, is there really a danger of getting general government compression in Hood River County? And that's a judgment call. And my judgment, there is, not in the short term, but in a couple of years. And the issue is when you look at the number of things that need to be funded over the next, and remember, these tax rates are forever, they're in perpetuity. But the question I had in my mind is, in the next 10 years or so, with a 10-year horizon, is there the possibility of us coming up against this situation where things like the county doing an operating levy for law enforcement, which we currently are doing, that would be, so one thing that's important to understand is, the way that this compression works is first compression losses are taken out of operating levies. And, and once operating levies are cut to zero, then compression dollars are taken out of, out of permanent rates. So what could happen is by increasing your permanent rate, and then there are some other permanent rate things which could happen over a period of time, then you result in the county, in all districts throughout the county, losing the ability to use a local option levy or an operating levy as a tool. So that's the danger that, not this year, you know, there's no one sitting in line right now to get us to $10. We were at $8, $8 and something.
We would be at $8.03, I think, Marcus, as we said.
If we got our dollar. Is, Mark, is that, are those the numbers?
Yeah, it was around $8 and a nickel if it passed.
Right, if it passed. And then the, the analysis was of what additional urban renewal districts could be created, because those also come out of general government. And then we were looking at the possibility of, of additional urban, so the city's looking at a very large urban renewal district on the west side, which could significantly increase the government, the general government number. And then there's some debate because the problem is, this depends on the spread between AV and RMV. And currently, those are spread nicely. But if you have a period of time where you have slow growth in real estate values, they can get back together very quickly. If you have a stagnant real estate market for any period of time, they get back together quickly. So those, those would get back together quickly. And we easily saw getting another dollar out of urban renewal and then basically being within $1 of hitting compression.
Isn't the waterfront urban renewal district about to expire?
So these don't expire. They, there's no built-in sunset to these. There's a limit to how much they're allowed to spend. So when they've spent all their money, you end Division of Taxes. And so the big thing, they're, we're looking to see the current ones disappear. So the, the waterfront, we should be, so the Columbia Cascade, which is the big downtown one, that has effectively used up all of its current acceptable, it's, it was called MI, maximum indebtedness. So they're currently at the end of that, or very close to the end of that, that could be increased if the city council changes their mind. They're currently on a path to see that, see Division of Taxes end on that very shortly. And then waterfront is not very far behind that because they've also spent almost their entire MI on that. But they could change their mind on those. If they end both of those and then start one on the west side, it takes some time before that builds up, but it does build up over time. So the problem is not that it's likely, or that it's short-term, that we're going to have this problem. It's that it's, it's an incredibly critical tool to government in general and that taking risks with it is something that, that, you know, we as a Board of Commissioners, we're not comfortable with. That we need to oversee the taxation system for the entire county, that's, that's, that's one of our roles. And there's the fear that we were getting, you know, creating a situation where there was some risk to it. Is it a high risk? You know, I sat down, debated that with, with people and, you know, everyone's got a different opinion on what the likelihood was of the scenarios that you need to see. Given current government, given the current reality of the world economies and, you know, where real estate's going and, and all of that, it's like, yeah, you could easily say, it's like, oh, that'll never happen. But you're making a decision, this is a permanent rate limit that you're requesting. And so I talked, so I asked a separate question of finance people I spoke to, and they said, is it, my question was in general, is it, is it an accepted practice to build capital into a permanent rate limit? And every finance expert, every government finance expert that I spoke to said, no, they would not recommend that.
Would the county commissioners be willing to understand our logic and why we chose the approach? Like, would you guys be open to listening to why we, we took the approach that we did?
I absolutely always wanted to listen. I think Mark made those arguments pretty well. I didn't feel like there was a, I mean, Karen, what do you think? Did you understand Anna's position when we had that discussion?
As the inner discussion with Mark, he was gracious to come and kind of walk us through his kind of rundown of the process and how you guys got there. You, as you're all present, you might want to add to that. And we, that was one of my first questions is how, how did this come about where you put capital and operation together, but the capital is only for a period of time of building the structure, but yet you're taxing the community members permanently for it? And how, my biggest question is how are you going to sell that, knowing what I had been through and how really challenging it is to prove the need for every one cent when it comes to any kind of levy to a group of community members? I felt pressure to know more about, understanding that because even to myself, that didn't really make, make a lot of sense to me. So those were some of the questions we asked and we had a discussion around that. If you have something you want to really implore to us, Anna, this would be a great time to do that so that we maybe understand further. But I can say I walked away from this topic feeling pretty confused that you're going to build a pool that's going to take a certain amount of money and a certain amount of time and then it'll be done, but you still want the community to pay for it continually, unending. And as, in the experience I had gone through in speaking with community members in our laborious process of getting our operational levy, I just knew that would be a big red flag for most of the community members that are involved in asking tax, tax-type questions. So maybe take the opportunity to run us through your thought process so for sure that we do understand.
You know, if I just had, you guys could talk to all of us individually outside of a meeting. And I think it would be really helpful to hear, I think each of us had a different logical path we went through in deciding this. And so I especially suggested it might make more sense to talk outside of a meeting individually rather than coming to a meeting again and, you know, going through the whole thing again. You might, you might learn more.
Nan and Suzanne, I don't know if you guys want to jump in, but my, my summary is, you know, based on the research that we did and the feedback and discussions with our community, we didn't want a nickel and dime our constituency. We didn't want to go to them for multiple levies. It was very much this idea of let's, let's take out one time ask, increase our levy because over a period of time, the services that our community has asked us for, the amenities that they have asked for, continue to increase. So we have the opportunity every year to set our rate to a maximum amount. We were asking to increase our maximum amount, which we may or may not use all of the, you know, always. But we just felt like it was better than to, you know, you get these operational levies and then you just continue to renew them. And there's a risk involved in that because if they don't get voted in over and over and over again, if you're relying upon them to continue to, you know, develop your, the amenities that the community is demanding, then why not just have one tax base? Like, why, you know, why not just have one rate and adjust it as needed? So that, I, I don't know, I wasn't able to make the meeting. I think Nan filled in for me, which I was grateful for. Maybe, Mark, you conveyed that, I didn't have an opportunity to. But in a nutshell, that's it. I think that, I appreciate the compression concerns. I think that, you know, if, if some finance experts can easily say it's not a risk, then, you know, that, that says a lot to me. If they easily believe it, it might not be a risk, then it just feels like maybe we got derailed, you know, needlessly. But I, I don't, Nan, do you want to jump in?
I, I guess the, the thing that I think is a little, was confusing for me is that Brian Beebe did not think it was a risk. And I don't know what the board, the commission knows that he doesn't know. That's the, I was kind of going by what he said.
And Brian insisted that's not what he said. So I think there may be some miscommunication in terms of what Brian said.
Well, that's easy to check, right?
I mean, I asked the question, I asked that question outright. And, you know, and got a different answer. And I know, you know, Mark is my neighbor, I've talked to Mark about these things. And I understood your argument extremely well. I thought he did a great job of describing it. And, yeah, let me just sort of say it as a side, what you've just described, Anna, is the fundamental flaw in Oregon's tax system. You've described why Oregon's tax system is a mess, right? You were working very hard to get around that. And that's precisely, I worked hard on the library levy. I, I crafted the second ask on the library. And we went through exactly the same thing where the first time through, it was requesting, it's like, hey, we're not going to levy all of it, but we don't want to be coming back to you again and again, and we want to have the capacity to do it. And it just got shot down and we came back with a bare bones proposal and were able to actually get our library reopened after having to close it for a year. So I completely appreciate understanding exactly the position you're in, that you've got a, you have a fiduciary responsibility for this organization and you're attempting to solve the problem that you see really clearly. And I think that you guys did a compelling job of describing the problem. I feel as a commissioner that I have a special role in guarding the ability of the districts to do operating levies in the future. And so compression, I think, is something that I have to worry about.
So would you be resistant to the, the extension of renewal districts and the west sides, the west side district? I mean, at what point do you say, sorry, there's no more, we just got to keep, we got to retain this, this cushion?
Yeah, see, that's not a permanent rate. Urban renewal is, is agreed by the community to a temporary redirection of existing tax dollars.
You mentioned that the water fronts might get extended and the downtown cascade one might get extended, so.
So let me be clear, I don't believe that the city council intends to extend them. They have the right to, to extend them. And there's a process they have to go through to get approval if they, if they extend them.
So am I misunderstanding that if it doesn't get extended, that then the, the government category would go down?
So the government category goes up and down all the time. The, the, the argument that, so I, I've looked pretty carefully through the, through the requests regarding the west side urban renewal. And the belief is that the rest, that the government dollar, the dollars in the government category go down for a period of time because of the, assuming that we, we see an end of Division of Taxes on waterfront and Columbia Cascade. And that, by the way, will mean that the school district is going to be in real hurt next year and the next couple of years because of that compression they're going to be suffering. And then that that will gradually be replaced by the west side. So this is the most likely scenario, is that west side will then grow to replace this and then some. We don't know quite what the and then some is, by how much more. It's a massive district. It's larger, much larger than those two districts combined. But it takes a while before, you only see the growth in the general government number when you're what's called the excess value. So there's, the urban rule has a cap. My memory is slipping on exactly what they call it, but there's, there's the frozen base, frozen base, that's the name. There's a frozen base and there's excess value above the frozen base. So on day one, when you create a district, you're at the frozen base. So there's no contribution to general government because there's no actual Division of Taxes happening.
I think we might be, no disrespect, I think we might be getting a little bit in the weeds. I, what I'd love to circle back to is, my understanding is that it is your recommendation that we go for a lower rate and then go for a bond, is that correct?
I have a couple of ideas. I think, so I think that that's one. And thanks for calling me off because I do tend to get into the weeds very easily.
It's interesting and I want to hear it over coffee, but I.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Respect on everyone's time this evening.
Honestly, I feel like some of this stuff is much better discussed one-on-one. It's just so much easier to, to have a back and forth. But, so yeah, so one suggestion is, is going for a very specific capital levy related to the, the pool slash rec center project and then going for a permanent rate limit of whatever you think the permanent rate limit should be. And doing those as two separate things. And then the, and I know that, that you're concerned about having a bunch of things on the ballot, including the dissolution and recreation of the district at the same time. So you don't have to do those both at the same time, right? You could do the, a bond for the, you could do a capital levy first and then go with the operating levy. But of course, you have the issue then that you may be building something that you don't have the operational capacity to operate. So I understand all of the complexity of this. Another thing which I hope, Mark, did, did Jeff talk to you about, about his idea?
Yeah, I believe so, and I think he told me it was your idea.
I suggested he talk to you about it, that was my idea.
I'd love for you to, to, to share with anyone. I think I might have shared it with Anna, but not with the rest of the group.
I was just concerned as to whether you were comfortable with me bringing that up in a public meeting.
Absolutely, I think that, I think that it is time to really brainstorm and no options are off the table.
Great. So what Jeff suggested to me, based on his previous experience and other, he's, he's been around, let's just say, he's been in a lot of other communities. And he said that if he ever saw an example of, of a situation of something that would be both eligible for and supported as a sales tax, this would be it. And so he really thinks, I don't know, I don't know how strenuously he believes this, but he had suggested that, 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 that that be put on the table for discussion. And, you know, we've just been through this, right? We know that the public wasn't willing to support this for the purposes that, you know, Karen can tell you all about. But from what I've heard from the community, from the sorts of things that people say on a regular basis about the need for parks and the need for park resources, one of my big concerns is that what you had described in your, in your, in your earlier proposal didn't really leave me comfortable that you were becoming the Parks and Rec District for all parks in the district. And you could create a pathway to that through a sales tax and you can make some promises associated with that. And when I say sales tax, it could be a food and beverage tax, it could be general sales tax, but the, you do have the ability to levy those. And those have no impact on the other taxing districts. And the complaint that people always make about them is that they're going to unreasonably affect restaurants and lodging and therefore you're going to lose TRT money in the process. And every analysis that any economist has ever done says that's not the case. No one showed me a single example where that, where the result has been that you destroyed business by putting a food and beverage tax.
If that was a viable option, why did the county back off of it?
Well, it tried it and it was rejected.
Right. And why didn't you try it again? I mean, if, I mean, if it could, we, we all saw that and, you know, I'm not just.
We were selling something they didn't want to buy. Karen, Karen was there.
Well, and I would also add that it will certainly be tried again, especially since it recently passed in Nittards and Canada Beach.
Yeah. I, I think you have such a more compelling argument for it than we did. You know, we were talking about it for, as a public safety, you know, money for public safety. And I think people, what I got from is that people feel safe, right? They, they didn't, and there was a, you know, effective campaign against it, et cetera. I'm not telling you it's going to be easy, I'm not going to tell you it's going to win. What I am saying is that if it were to ever succeed, this is the most likely place for it to succeed. That's, that's, that's my analysis, but I'm just, uh, Jeff and I both, you know, nodded and say, yep, that, that sounds right. But.
So the, the suggestions that we have on the table are shoot for a sales tax and separate our permanent rate levy. The dissolution reformation, uh, strategy from an operational levy and try to do one or the other first. Which is risky because one passes, the other one doesn't. We're hosed.
I would really love to hear from Karen about her experience out in the community because I, I, I think from the very beginning, you know, we, we've all obviously watched what happened to public health, watched what happened to the county and, you know, and been concerned about the community's response to what we're asking. And, and so I'd really love to hear what words of wisdom you have, Karen.
Well, I don't think I have any words of wisdom, but I can show you just a few thoughts about what my experience was like and how I kind of relate that to what you guys are discussing. And I certainly, um, relate and understand that you have a facility that is failing and the dire need and the immediate need. We had the, the same pressure. We were not able to provide law enforcement officers. We were shutting down county services, closing departments, and it was painful and extremely difficult to go through. And we are, many of our meetings were very emotionally charged and frustrating. And even when we got into, I held focus groups. All, all the commissioners, we divvied up kind of our expertise areas throughout the county. And we held multiple focus groups with stakeholders and then we rounded into, um, community town halls that we held multiples of, and we got earfuls of how the community felt about this concept of raising taxes. And this was before a lot of the elements in the environment now, which we can all name and list. This was at a fairly quiet time and, um, we were trying to determine what to do. We were down to a 18-month period of resources at the end of that significant closures were going to take place. Then the county was being, going to be closing complete departments. So we were under super pressure to make something happen or lose a lot. And we were, um, having community meetings with a lot of community members that really didn't even understand what the county did. Had no idea that the public works department did all the different things that they just count on being done. Had no idea what public health really did. So we were also challenged with this element of educating our community about what the essential services were. And then when we were asking them for more money and how, how we were going to de- place the money in each particular department. Our first couple of levies that we asked for, the sales tax piece, the feedback we got from the restaurant tours that we're going to put them all out of business and the world's going to come to an end. And it, it was emotionally draining. And frankly, there were times it was really quite awful. And the, if you entered, attended some of the meetings we had at the adult center, you witnessed some of the yelling that took place at us as commissioners for having the gall to ask for more tax dollars. So when I think about your guys' project and moving forward, I really feel like the advice you get from experts that community members and taxpayers are far more apt to build stuff than they are to give for operational practices. I think the pool is like the perfect, let's build this rec center pool thing. I think this community would be, the appetite would be far better for that ask than it would be for a up to a certain amount operational levy that includes building a pool. And we have this flexibility of charging this an amount, we may, we may not, the community is going to. The folks I interacted with would not buy that at all. So for me, thinking about your project, I support a separate, um, capital project levy. And moving to a different model for your operational levy with this unfortunate situation of dissolution and creating a new. Whether it's the same time or how you space that out, or how you work with the other entities in the community that also have extremely failing systems that need dollars. That's, that's part of your guys' decisions matrix and how that works. I don't really know, but the experience that I had was quite harrowing. And the community members, when it comes to placing a tax on their ballot, you will hear from people that don't normally attend your conversations.
Yeah. And I think I was at a number of those conversations and remember them distinctly. And I think part of the problem that you've touched on too is, you know, I think I just heard Arthur, you say that, you know, you, that why, you know, parks and rec should take over all the parks. I think part of the problem is people don't even know. We, we got blamed when the county closed, um, Tucker Park, right? Was it Tucker Park? Yeah, I think it was Tucker Park. Right. Like, they're like, why are, if you want more money, then why are you closing our parks? You know, it's like, it's not even, nobody even knows what park is who's parked. And so I think there's a tremendous amount of education that has to be done. And I think this is, this conversation is even a perfect example of that. Where it's, it's just so hard to educate the public to a point where they can make educated decisions without just reacting to gut decisions, right? And saying, I'm not going to give any more money. So I think that's part of what we're up against too, is really people understanding. And, and the truth is that a, a new pool and a new rec center is super sexy, but people to work in it is not. But it's unfortunately, it's just like county public works is not really all that sexy. It's something that happens and people expect it. And they are only upset when it goes away. Like, and that's, I think, why the library was so successful was because it actually had to shut down for a number of years. So I guess that's one of my fears is, you know, I think we're in this position where the only thing that we have that's really sellable and sexy is this pool and rec center. But the truth is that if we really want to be the parks and rec department that we keep hearing from our surveys that people want, which is this, you know, parks and recreation and running all the parks, as Arthur mentioned, and, you know, having them run well and building new trails, that we also need that personnel cost. And I just, I, I'm not seeing a clear path in getting both without a lot of risk to ourselves of building something that we then can't support.
And that's kind of why, uh, I suggested looking outside of the property tax system, just, just as an experiment. Karen, do you want to, uh, let them know a little bit about the, the courthouse or should I share that?
I think you can go ahead. I mean, I, I'll just give a little bit of a background on the courthouse. The courthouse, our, our county courthouse is determined the, um, least safe and in the worst condition in the entire state of Oregon. There was a study done in 2007 or nine?
I think it was seven. Yeah.
And it was done by, uh, the department, Oregon Department of Justice to evaluate the safety and safety as far as building structure and safety as far as the people conducting their business inside the facility being safe at today's standards. And at that time, Head River was ranked, I think, fourth or fifth from the bottom. All those below have now been repaired, rebuilt or refurbished. So Head River is the only one that's not been touched. Our building would not survive any type of seismic activity and currently has cement falling off the walls. The elevator is inoperable and I think the very upper floor is not even, um, enterable.
We had a roof collapse, a, a ceiling collapse in one of the courtrooms.
So we're, the county is in a position of not having a courthouse really very soon. And so the pressures of fixing that and coming up with money, build a courthouse, how are we going to fix this problem? It's a serious problem. Lays on our shoulders as well for this particular building, which has some pretty significant necessities for just continual community operations in our county. So we began the process a number of years ago, right? Almost at the same time when we were running out of money even to operate the county. And I had spent quite a bit of time in Salem on the courthouse task facility committee for the Association of Oregon Counties, moving our project along. There was a lot of good reception at the state level to support Head River and moving forward because our courthouse is in such deplorable condition. But as a county commission, we were overwhelmed at the time with trying to figure out how to keep the doors operating at the county and to, to not enter into a period of significant closures and massive loss of essential services in our community. And it was shelved. And so now we are in a different place today and Arthur has re, he has reinvigorated my interest in the courthouse project, which is, is, it's, it's hard. This is really hard work. And he has taken the lead and at the, uh, Salem level and participating in some conversations about how we, the county is going to need help in building a courthouse. And I'm going to then hand it over to him because he's got more of an update of kind of where that sits and what it looks like and.
Yeah. Basically, the only reason I'm sharing it is we have a 30 to $50 million facility, uh, that we need to figure out how to build as a community. Uh, and it's the least sexy thing possible. So I don't see, I frankly don't see any way to go to the public in a bond measure, in a capital levy. I don't think a capital levy for courthouse would pass. And I don't know if you have a different opinion, Karen, but, uh, uh, we simply don't have, uh, you know, we're kind of dry in terms of options right now. We're working with the city, looking at some possible joint facility, uh, seeing if we can find some economies, seeing if we can find some way to come up with a story that the community will understand that we're looking for a really frugal way to do the minimum possible to get a new courthouse so that people don't get killed in the next earthquake.
I thought you guys were going to pitch an aquatic justice center.
Go for it, please.
Come for swimming, pay for your tickets.
I, yeah, uh, any, anything that, that is creative, I, you know, I, I, I assume you were joking, but I'm going to try to figure that out. Yeah.
We've talked a lot about, um, how to, like, what, how can we get creative with this courthouse idea? What if we moved it, vacated that building? Bulldozed it and sold the land to some happy developer that would roll in and make some kind of a, you know, hotel motel, whatever. I don't know. Or McMinimums would come and take the courthouse and turn it into something cool. And we would take our idea of a courthouse and go somewhere else and.
Strip mall, do the, the strip mall style courthouse, which would be super cheap, uh, compared to.
We looked at the Wacoma, the Wacoma building down there, but then at the exact same time, a new lease was secured. It was like a 20, 25-year lease with the Forest Services down there. And then we looked at the yards, which are neighboring to the Earth facility. What could we do there? What if we pulled all that stuff out of there and put it outside? And we made some kind of justice center and the city put their stuff there and the county put that, because we own that, we half and half own that. You know what? We, we're really trying to think, what can we capitalize on, especially with land? Because the county does have a few parcels of land, as does the city. And how can we combine or liquidate or? We thought about selling the entire parking lot for the kebab building, which we already have sold part of it, which is, you know, many can say that has not worked out very well. The kebab.
What about if we built a pool on your yard and you guys take the pool for your justice center?
Well, there's all, there's those kinds of options. I mean, that area town is where density is pushing and growing. And the yard at one time belonged there. And now it would be questionable to say whether a yard really does belong there or not.
I swear, Arthur, you and I talked about this five years ago. I remember sitting there.
It was, I think it was at the Super Bowl, uh, we were watching the Super Bowl at Gary's house.
I think so. We talked about that idea. It's great that it's good there, you know, that there's possibly some momentum there.
Yeah. I, I, I think really the reason I brought it up was, was more just so that you would appreciate that, uh, you know, as frustrating as your position is, we've got one that's even more frustrating. Because at least you've got something sexy that people, you know, people like ice cream and cookies. Uh, we're not offering them ice cream or cookies and you guys are.
Are you saying that people don't like courthouses? They're awesome. Frank Ruben?
I honestly, I mean, I've been talking to commissioners around the state, just trying to understand people who've done like Will Sherman County has a relatively new courthouse. I was down in, uh, in Klamath County, it, and I, I saw they had a, a, a new courthouse there. I said, wow, my God, how did you guys get a new courthouse? It turns out that, uh, in 1997 or, no, 2003 or something, there was an earthquake and their old courthouse was destroyed in an earthquake, which I totally forgot there was even an earthquake down there. But their courthouse was destroyed, so they somehow then rose to the surface. And I would hate for that to have to be what happens here in order for us to, 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 to get the funding. But, um, yeah, I, 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 I think the community wants to see the, a new pool. They want to see a rec center. They want to see us funding parks, uh, with a, a, a more sustainable, uh, uh, picture. So I think that you've got something to sell to the community. It's complicated. I get it. But I think that you've got a, a message that, you know, you, you're selling something that people will want to buy. You just have to figure out how to get it in front of them in a way that they'll, they'll take it. We're selling something that people don't want to buy. They need it. They don't want it. Um, and that's frustrating. And, and I'm not saying that, you know, you can't do this because we need a courthouse. I'm not saying anything like that at all. I just want you to understand, you know, we're coming up with this and, and we have, our operating levy is now, you know, we're, we're, uh, you know, basically in, year after next, we're going to have to be going out with another operating levy or another solution, uh, to deal with, to do with our, our budget issues. Uh, and.
And that, that, that point, Arthur, reminds me of something you said, Anna, about, you know, not wanting to nickel and dime the community and getting some feedback maybe from some of your, uh, focus groups around they not wanting to be nickel and dimed. But something that we encountered regularly, um, in our conversations with the, what we were looking for is that the community members expressed that they wanted to have accountability measures in play so that if they were not happy with the services, that they could vote no in the future. And so I think when you think about, we don't want to nickel dime, nickel and dime the community. And there are certainly a subset of community members that are good with that. And they want you to have a plethora of funds to do a good job. There's also, um, a subset of the community that will arise when you start really putting this on the ballot. And they want to know exactly what control they will have over whether you raise the rate and what you're going to be doing with the money. And being accountable to that group of, of, of community members is something that your language really needs to address as a whole group altogether and be centered and focused together around the language for accountability in future expenses and raising, lowering or changing that rate.
There, there's one phrase that you used, Anna, uh, which, uh, you, you said, um, uh, we don't have to levy the full rate. And I can tell you my experience with the library and, and previous debates, no one buys that. It, it, I'm sure that you mean it honestly and truthfully, but no one cares when in, in the constitution, it's called the permanent rate limit. Like, you can't find the legislator or commissioner who doesn't call it permanent rate. Because people don't realize that it's simply the ceiling and you don't have to go up to it. So that's been my experience.
Well, I, I really appreciate both of you coming and joining us tonight. And I appreciate the, the perspective and the insight that you guys brought us. Suzanne and Ann, do you guys have any other questions for Arthur or Karen tonight? Can we, um, can, can we reserve the right to reach out to you guys individually or collectively in the future with other questions or just bounce ideas or thoughts off of you?
Please do. And also the other commissioners, they couldn't be here because they're not allowed to be here at, at, in a single meeting. But, uh, they all, everyone is very engaged in the subject and they all have opinions on this. So please don't hesitate to, to call any of us and talk to us. And if, uh, if you want us to come back, we'll be happy to come back. I mean, you're working on a really important problem, uh, for the community and a really important opportunity for the community. And, uh, you know, I'd love to help.
Absolutely. I agree. What you guys are trying to do, you have a significant lift. Anything that we can share from our experience, uh, that could be helpful, all of the commissioners would be willing to talk, meet, coffee, anything, meetings, whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you. That's great. Uh, Ruben, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes. Commissioner Babitz, um, I, I apologize. I didn't catch something. You, there was mentioned that there were three possibilities here. One would be a capital bond levy with a permanent rate that was lower than proposed a sales tax on food and beverage, but I didn't catch the third one.
I'm not sure. Did I say three?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, well, I'm kind of at a loss. I mean, you can go with both of your, if, if, if you're doing property tax based things, you can do both of them at the same time or at different times. I suppose that's a, a different option than, than, um, but no, I don't, I don't think I had another, well, yeah, I, I, I did say it could be general sales tax or food and beverage tax or, you know, any, anything along the spectrum. Sorry, I don't recall. I don't.
Oh, no, that's, that's okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing like the, the, the magic formula that was going to make all this come together.
Yeah, I'm sure it was a great idea. I just can't remember it now.
All right. Thank you. I'll, I'll shut up now.
Thank you both for your time.